Okay folks, I got four o'clock on the note, so we're at Park Meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started with the regular meeting, I'd like to take just a moment of our time if I could. This will be my first meeting, I've been a long time, 18 years now. And this is the first meeting that we don't have access to the expertise of Larry Beeman. As you know, Larry Beeman's passed away this week. And I've called on Larry multiple times, not just as a good friend and somebody who's been down along the roads that I've been down on, but he's been a member of a lot of organizations. He is a school board member in North Main for years and years. In fact, I think he was the youngest in the state to serve on that board. And he's going to be missed by a whole lot of people. So I'd like, if we could, just to have a moment of silence of his memory and keep his wife Rhonda and the kids Jonathan and Gwynn in mind with their wives and their children as well. So let's just give him just a moment of our respect, please. My father, we asked that you be with his family as he goes through this difficult time. Such a wonderful family who's done so many wonderful things for the people of this county, in Vermillion County, always been involved and has always done the right thing as best he saw the right thing. We asked that you be with them, keep them safe, keep them strong. And I know you've already got him in your arms, and we ask that you take care of him and give him peace. In your son's name we pray, amen. Okay. Also like to commemorate, if you fail to realize, today is December 7th, this is Pearl Harbor Day. And it's hard to imagine what this morning would have been like. Got last night, put your kids to bed, and it's Sunday morning in Hawaii at 8:00 in the morning, went all the falls apart, so it's hard to imagine. That generation certainly has provided for us what we have today. And now it's our responsibility to take best care of it as we can, and that's what we intend to do today, so here we go. We had the minutes before, so we need approval for the minutes for October 5th and November 16.
Since everybody's looked at them, so I make a motion, we approve the minutes for October 5th and November 16.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye. Okay. Payroll, we have two here, November 23rd, let's go ahead and do that one first. November 23rd with an amount of $221,634.95. Anybody have any questions or concerns on payroll? And then is there a motion to approve?
I'm making a motion to approve payroll for the November 23rd payroll, the amount of $221,634.95. I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, then we have today's payroll, the amount of $182,124.95.
I'm making a motion, we approve the payroll in $234,186.64.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
No. I thought you were approving the December 7th payroll.
We are.
He read, he read.
Oh, I'm sorry, I read the wrong number. I was sorry, it was $182,124.95. It's my fault, sorry about that.
Good catch, Sammy.
Thank you.
Yeah, I looked down at the.
Yeah, I thought you were doing awful.
At the claims.
Yeah, yeah, I was saving that for later.
Now we're on the right one.
Who seconded that?
Bruce did.
Okay.
I did the first one.
Yes.
And I seconded the first one and.
Yes.
Seconded the second one.
Got it.
Okay. Then we need to acknowledge receipt of, hold on, we'll get that done when we move on.
Okay, now I can get my numbers right.
Yep.
I make a motion, we accept, acknowledge the receipt of the payroll claims, the amount of $234,186.64.
Anybody will second that?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, then we have claims. It is the end of the year, so it's a large one, $511,017.68.
She also attached a list of the highest claims she wanted to see, and they were asphalt.
Yes.
A lot of asphalt.
Yep.
So, end of the year stuff, like you said.
Yep.
Anyway, I'll make a motion, we approve claims in the amount of $511,017.68.
And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You know, it gets tough, I get ready to lick my fingers to get paper to go on. Tough to get there. Alright. We have some hand type checks. Did we, the one check we were talking about, the $12,000 for you, for that grant, did that get sent?
For the what?
For that grant for the, that had to be done early and sent in by the end of reimbursement.
We approved Jim to sign for.
For the $15,000? Commonwealth, whatever it was.
Oh, with the $15,000, yes, yes, it's done, okay.
Yes, the money should be in here by December 9th.
Okay, but we don't have a paper today for that?
No, that was already in the claims.
Okay, because we approved that by conversation.
Yes, we did.
I checked, we had to get that done.
Yep.
So I want to, do you have an amount for that?
It was $12,000.
I thought it was $12,000, yeah, okay. So, let's go ahead and prove that, get it in the minutes as it's been approved. We okayed it, and okayed you to write it because it had to be done on a quick basis. And, but let's get that, so I make the motion that we approve that grant to Commonwealth in the amount of $12,000 to cover the grant.
No, I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we have a handful of out-of-cycle checks here. And are they all listed on this list here? Okay. Bruce, I don't know if you want to see those in.
There's several of them that came in today at the last minute, so instead of carrying them over till next year, I just put it in so they can be added today.
What was there on this list?
That's what I'm asking, are they all here on this list? Okay, then we don't have to do them individually, unless you want to, if you have a question about one, otherwise we can approve them as presented, if that would be your preference.
Okay, if that's the case, I'll make a motion, we approve the hand type checks as presented by the auditor.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Those hand type checks, just for the minutes, I'll get them out, we're the G and M for $272.30, WTH for $500, Walbridge for $100, Cleaver Cabling for $500, Kelligan $22.90, Cleaver Cabling for $750, and Park County Lumber for $97.80. Okay, Cassick, planning and zoning, you got an ordinance for us to approve?
Yeah, I believe Laura provided you copies of that ordinance. The Planning Commission in their November meeting approved a rezone of six acres in Hollinsburg for Randall Atkins and Justin Baker. They endorsed our storage, also in Hollinsburg. And they're wanting to expand their storage facility. Rezone from ag productive to commercial general business.
Alright.
And that will be ordinance 2020 dash 25.
You don't have the legal description on the six acres attached. I gave it to Laura when I got here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it in there behind the old roadhouse?
Yes.
That area, that's what.
They bought six acres from the Lichen family for us.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody having questions?
Nope, I don't have a problem with it.
Nick, do we need a same day, same meeting on this?
She has one.
Yes, I have.
There's one back there, okay.
This is a resumé to be signed.
Okay, then I, I can make the motion, and then we approve ordinance 2020 dash 25, same day, same meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Then I make the motion that we approve ordinance 2020 dash 25 as presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Usually Dan does it, but I know your planning and commission report down at the bottom, do you have anything you want to report, or is Dan going to do a report on that?
Just that, it was another, November was almost 2 million.
Great.
In new construction, and with the covering everything that's going on this year, it's been a good year for new construction.
And I'm not sure people realize, I'm sure you have, but Scott Pitt is making about a $2 million investment in the county, they bought a tropical building, they're going to put about a million bucks worth of equipment in there, they're going to make an upgrade of their facility, they have about a million. They expect to create about 11 jobs, that range. And I really hope people understand, I don't know how we get into amendments or in the paper, but I talked to Nathan, the CEO, thanked him at that meeting. It's more than just a paycheck for somebody, this is an opportunity for families to make a real, a real wage. It's an opportunity for 11 families now to stay here, who may have had to go someplace else to find work, to get by, take care, raise their kids here, buy a house here. All the things that communities do are made possible by our local, local people who are making those investments in our county, and I deeply appreciate that effort.
Yeah, well, and that, the buildings have been put to good use.
It is, it is, yep, yep. And that's going to enable us now to do other things with the county's plan that we had snagged with before, so we can get the lines around where they need to go, and so that's going to be an ongoing process. It's really, it's more than just spending $2 million bucks and getting 11 guys a paycheck. It's more than that, always is. Okay. Carly, is it that time again?
It is. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, appreciate it.
Keep on and pass it to me. Good afternoon, everyone. Okay, the workers' compensation coverage renews January the 5th. And all in all, things are pretty, pretty consistent for us, except one, one factor. Our experience mod went from 1.14 to 1.16, so that's pretty minimal of a change based on our loss experience. We have no rate change on the rate per hundred of payroll. Our increase in our projected premium is due to increased payroll. In 2019, the payroll went up for the county about $349,000 over 2018. And in talking, talking with Laura, I guess there was overtime in 2019, longevity pay and raises. So our projected payroll, we're using a payroll estimate for 2021 of $4,492,624, which is your 2019 payroll, plus we added 2% just to hopefully keep up with any increases. I've listed the claim information for you. One thing I wanted to make a note, when I put here, like in 2019, we had 21 claims with approximately $71,800 paid. 21 claims sounds like a lot. Only 10 of those claims generated any payments. The other 11 were incidents only, which means something happened and we just filed a report as we're required to do, as employers are required to do. What we don't want to happen is that sprained ankle to turn into something large down the road, and we're not made aware of it.
Yeah.
So our department has, we've worked real hard to get them to report any incidents to us, even though they go in as record only, no medical attention, no lost time. In 2020, we've had 24 claims, only eight of those have generated any payments. Our projected annual premium for 2021 is the $126,749.
Yep, okay.
We have continued the monthly safety meetings. Now, I think we've been doing this for about a couple of years. Julie Landzone is continuing to do an awesome job for us, leading that committee. And we're averaging eight to 10 people a month attending those meetings.
Has someone from IPEP come to those?
Well, they, they were until the COVID.
Okay.
And then obviously they have ceased those type of meetings. There was, Julie did one by Zoom a couple of months ago, and the IPEP representative was in attendance on that.
Okay.
He's copied with all the materials that Julie puts out. So they, they know we're having those meetings.
Okay.
We do have a couple of departments, I'd like you to encourage all the departments to at least get one person there, and so we can have all departments represented. I know it can't happen every month.
Right.
So.
So we need to vote on the premium for 2122?
Yes, and I think it was already mentioned, because I think I saw it in one of the newspapers, that Julie did apply for an IPEP safety grant, and the county was awarded that grant for about $467.
Yeah.
Every little bit helps.
Yep. Okay, so the request is $126,749 for the premium for 2122.
At least it didn't go up like our health insurance numbers did. So, with that, I make a motion that we go ahead and redo our workers' cop insurance with Branson Insurance, that the quote that she's giving us tonight, and I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And maybe next year, when 2017 drops off, the $66,000 drops off, maybe we'll have a decent year.
A little better again.
Well, right, right now, though, we're running about the same amount for 2020, which will go on.
Okay.
So let's, let's hope we can hold.
At least maintain it.
Yes.
Thank you, Carla.
Thank you, and wish you all a healthy season.
Thanks. George, you're next. George Smith. George handles our county liability insurance.
I don't know the protocol, so.
Whatever you want.
We're easy to get along with, George.
I appreciate that, guys. It's the first one.
Yeah, we just hand them over. Save you a trip around.
These are separate, and there's a reason for that. The first one I handed you, that, this is right hand corner, it says rap on it. Should be the thinnest of them.
Yep.
This is the cyber, cyber liability. It actually renewed because we kind of short-termed that when we wrote this the first time. It renewed on December 2nd, I knew us coming in on the 5th or the 7th. So I do have this bound, you know, I ain't want you to go without coverage. But basically on the cyber liability, last year we expired was 9572. This year, we're coming in at.
9804.
9804. So we.
Are we actively insured in that age of, is that, are you okay with those numbers?
I, I am.
Okay.
I, I am, and it's all, and I appreciate getting the information. It's based off of county revenue.
Right.
The more county revenues, the more expensive this policy gets.
Okay, it's just not a place to try to save.
Yeah, with everything going on, like we talked a few years back, you know, ransomware, things like that. So, so that is on the cyber.
Okay.
And then on the county's insurance, a couple of pretty significant changes. Number one, just so you know, I did send this out for bids. Astra refused to do it. The county right now is running at a 78% loss ratio. So Astra would not give me a bid, One Beacon wouldn't give me a bid, Zurich wouldn't give me a bid. Trident gave me a bid, EMC gave me a bid.
What's your threshold, 75?
Depends on which company. Astra, which is extremely competitive, if you stay under 55, they're, they're all over it. That's a difficult thing for municipality. It's very difficult.
Just so you folks know what that means, at 55, means they expect to keep 45% of our premium to them.
Exactly.
They expect us to spend 55%. How dare we spend all the coverage that we buy?
That's exactly right.
So if we spend more than 55% of the coverage that we purchased, they're not going to renew us again, because they expect to keep 45% in their pocket.
That's right. So the bid, I'm looking to renew you with Travelers. They came in, the one thing Travelers did different this year, I kept your buildings on a blanket over the years, just valued all of them, we kept it on a blanket. Due to the fact that courthouses have a lot of renovations, also it's on the National District Registry, things like that, I pulled that building out and put it on its own coverage.
Okay.
Okay, that way if something devastating happens, the last numbers I had, it's been a couple of years since we had an appraisal, but I've got the courthouse insured for a little over 15 million.
Okay.
Okay, and that is replacement cost. There's also 25% building on top of that, if the cost of goods go up.
Now, I'll never replace the cost, I know what that works on my house, but only that, 15 million, I can't imagine touching restructuring, rebuilding something like this, but so that, what I'm asking is, if this was destroyed, we wanted to replace it, and we have 15 million of coverage, do we just get 15 million and that's the limit we get? It's not a matter of replacing our courthouse, it's replacement up to that 15 million that we have covered for.
That's always the top limit, yes, yes.
Because I can't even imagine what this thing would cost to build today. Only cost $79,000, 1879.
Is that?
That's what it was, they had built 1879, $79,000, yep.
The other big difference is the vehicle coverages. The vehicles, we just have higher value on vehicles now. You know, there's been some trucks replaced and things like that, and you'll have that trucking value for 30,000, you know, we even have a value at the new truck at 174,000.
Yeah.
So that, that was really where the significant came in. During expiring, for instance, last year on autos was, was a 58,271, just for the autos. This year, 67,899. And then on the property, it's about 7,000 more this year than it was last year. We have a build-in inflation guard, though, to where we always add 3% to 4% of the value of the building we increase at each year. So the property values have to increase.
Okay. That's about 12% increase or so there then?
If you look at the very back page, I apologize for my great editing skills.
What'd you do, George? Oh, I see.
I know it, they, I couldn't get, they always put me right down to the water. But anyway, I did get the information on the number of employees and things like that, and I so appreciate that, because I did adjust some of our prices. So please see where it says, the public entity employment related practices, the employment practices liability, that price I came in at, I've drawn the line through that.
Okay.
And it dropped it down to 16,066, because we had approximately 20 part-time employees, so they'd be after that different.
Okay.
And that did the same thing down the umbrella, because the umbrella also sits on top of your employment practices.
Got you.
Okay? So basically, where we're at this year, premium for your property, autos, liability, everything but cyber, 205,126.
You know what it was last year?
Last year, we were at 183.
Yeah, I think, I thought that was quite a jump. So that's 22,000, that's 10, again, about 11% increase.
I have a question, if I can.
Sure.
George, is there a section here where I can see the law enforcement activities, the liability occurrence, any exclusions? Is that any active or is that?
It's not, in that fact, that would be in the policy.
Okay, can you send me that?
I can.
Okay.
Do you need, see that before we approve?
Well, as you, you're aware, that's come up.
Yes, it has.
Recently, and there are deductibles going up by $5,000. So I wanted to see the actual language in the policy as to our right to decline, to settle, is what I'm looking for. There, I guess there's language, there supposedly in the past has been language in there that kind of restricts our right to deny settlement on certain legal issues.
Okay.
So that's the part I'm looking for.
Okay.
I don't know how much of a cap that puts on the rap that we have in place there, if two weeks is something that's going to affect it or not.
When's the date, effective January 5th, we got, yeah, we got.
Okay, if you have the time, I'd like to work.
Two weeks cut you too short? If we approve it next, in two weeks, is that going to cut you too short?
The only thing about next two weeks, I have to say this, someone will be out of the country.
Ah.
Will you be back two weeks from today?
I will be back on December 26th.
That'll work then.
Yeah.
This, this takes effect January 5th, so we have time after you get back to go ahead and you do what you need to do to put this in play?
Yes.
I just wanted to look at that language and see.
Or else we can prove it as is, contingent upon your approval?
I don't know that that's something that they're necessarily going to be willing to negotiate on in any way, and that's, from my understanding, standard language in there, but.
You want to explain to these guys how that works, that there was a limit? We didn't, if we didn't take that and didn't settle for that, then we were on the hook for this, go ahead.
Right, so in any type of law enforcement related action, if there's a lawsuit, and we're recommended to settle by the insurance attorney, and we don't settle, it could open the county up for additional liabilities, ask the cost in relation to a settlement that happens later, or some type of finding that happens later from a judge. And we ran into that on something within the past year, which we just, I just mainly in asking for that, wanted to be certain what that language says.
But what is the reason for these insurance companies settling, right or wrong?
The, the big issue anymore is, and it's not just you guys, it's my municipalities everywhere. I know you see the tort claims that come through, or you see these that come through, and we get bombarded with them, and you guys get bombarded with them, the cost to defend. So what happens is, you know, this guy wants $8,000. So of course our attorneys are going to come back in and say, you ought to settle, because we're going to spend 15 to defend it.
And the irritating part about that is, we paid for them to go to battle for us.
Yes.
But they don't want to go to battle for us, but they don't want to pay that 8,000 bucks to save them the other money, they want us to pay the 8,000 bucks to save them the money of coming off their profit off of our, our 200 grand we're going to pay in premiums.
It, it seems like, too, the more we settle, the more lawsuits we end up with. We never say no, which I'll go ahead and give them the money and be done with it, right or wrong.
And, and that's where, regardless how small they are, I've always sent the claims in.
Yep.
Just because I'm, I'm not an attorney, and.
Well, we had that discussion with an attorney, and he, and we were concerned about just making this a, why not suit? I mean, what do you, what do you ask?
That's right.
So if you make it a reasonable suit for 10,000 or less, they're probably going to settle without any question, that's give you the 10,000 bucks, and you go on your way, and, and we pay for that, the insurance company keeps our premiums, they don't pay for that, we pay for that.
We're not blaming you, but at what point?
No, it's your fault, yours.
At what point, at what point do we say we've had enough? Let's fight them, tell them, no, we're not paying.
And it's one of those things, you know, just so you know, it's not just with Travelers.
Oh, it is, we understand.
I've got, I've got like four or five other companies that I use in different municipalities, and it's just, it's everywhere.
Do you ever see ones where they don't include that language in the policy? And I assume that's at a, at a cost probably.
It's, it's pretty much standard policy language, just across the board.
Well, if you don't mind getting it to Nick, and then we'll, I guess we'll make a decision and sign it in two weeks if it won't put you in a bind.
No, I mean, it, it won't get me in a bind as long as. No, I mean, it won't get me in a bind as long as.
Okay. Or we can prove it contingent upon Nick's approval, and then you can go ahead in a day or two, whenever you get it to him, let him look at that. Would you rather do that?
Yeah, we can do that, and you get the answer from Nick and be done with it.
And I've got a three-mail and stuff.
So I'd make the motion that we approve this, this liability insurance aspect as a contingent upon Nick's approval of the language, and, and give Nick the authority then to contact George and give the okay to go ahead and process. That'd be my motion.
I'll second that.
Bruce, any questions on that? Are you okay with that? We move a second then to approve contingent upon Nick's approval. I should say for the minutes, our attorney's approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So Nick, if you would, once you get it and you're comfortable with it, if you're, and if you're not, then it's done till our next meeting.
Well, it's just that one section's all I'm looking for on the language of.
Yeah. And I'm sure you're right. Why would they negotiate that?
Yeah, it's probably non-negotiable, but I don't have a copy of our past policy, so it'd be good for me to have a copy anyway, in case it comes up.
Are you okay going ahead and signing these?
Yes, we are, because they are, they're of no value to you until Nick approves.
That's fine.
Okay.
This one on the last page is for the.
Just be sure you get that in minutes time, if you would, that we've asked of contingent upon world approval that these contracts we sign mean nothing until Nick gives you approval.
You just need Jim's signature, I think.
Yeah, that's on the uninsured, mother of your standard insured, and then this one's on the cyber. You need copies of those, don't you? Okay, you okay? Scan this in.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's not available.
George, appreciate what you did.
Appreciate it.
And I do appreciate the ability to be able to call you with a question, and you always get right back to me with that, so I appreciate that.
Appreciate it. Thanks, George. Thank you.
You folks have a good Christmas.
Thanks, Carla.
See you guys. Hey, Jim Erickson.
Have a seat there, pal. All right, thank you. I appreciate y'all meeting with us. My name is Jim Erickson, I represent TDM Farms, and we built a south farm here last year, first of years, and you're talking about investments. I think it cost us ten million if we employed twenty people. But kind of run into a snag. Our goal was to move the manure by dragline, where you could just lay a hose out so we could stay off the roads, plus it's cheaper for us to do. But sometimes, things don't work out the way you want, so we've done some of it that way, and I hope this coming fall, we can do it again, fall of twenty-twenty-one, then we'll be able to do that. But this fall, I need to put some on wheels and move. So I called Mr. Randy Norman, and he said, why don't you come in and talk to the commissioners about it? So that's why I'm here.
How big, how often?
We should, it should be like a three-week time span to do this.
What do you haul it with?
It'd be eight thousand gallons of manure on a, on a tanker, semi-tanker.
Ninety thousand pounds?
Yeah. I think about eighty, eighty.
Okay.
Yeah. That'd be the full weight, and then the empty weight coming back, so. And I could draw you a map if you want me to apologize for not having something.
Well, it's a concern, as I know, as I know you know it's a concern, but if you talk to Fountain County, are you planning on going out to two thirty-four?
Both, can I use that board ready?
Yes.
Sure.
It was under that cart, they were on the bottom shelf of that cart, where that is?
The cart.
Is there, are they, are they on that shelf, that cart?
No.
So we need to go down here.
Are they in the cabinet?
That's okay.
I'll just write it down.
So you go in front of your farm out to?
Here.
Two thirty-four?
Both ways.
Okay.
So our farm sits on, you know, it's six hundred, six hundred west in Fountain County, and then it turns seven on us. So we would like to go south out of the farm for part of this, and we're only going to go six tenths of a mile.
Okay.
There's a Maryland Uplinger, Ronald Brook, Keith Will, they all have farms down.
Yes.
And what we'll do is we'll tanker it, and then it goes into a frac tank, so like, just imagine a big, huge dumpster.
Okay.
Dump it into there, and then the dragline works, pulls it out of that.
Okay.
So you got the hose goes back and forth.
Okay.
Less compaction on the farmer's ground, and we're not running tankers over the ground, so, so that would be, part of it would go that way.
Okay.
Some of it would go back to two thirty-four, north out. Get my directions right, back east on two thirty-four, down to, down to five hundred, and back into Fountain County.
Yeah.
So I think that's at Nixon down there.
So Fountain County gave you the okay?
Yeah, they gave me the okay.
Because last time, that was, that was stumbling block, last time, wasn't it?
What's that?
Wasn't that the problem last time with the?
No, we had the, what the issue was there was, let me see, I permitted that, I permitted that farm, and the permit was about ready to expire. It was only good for two years at that time. So you had to show some type of, you had to start construction.
Okay.
So I ended up running some concrete in there in February, and I tore the road up.
Okay.
Which I paid for.
Okay.
And then, so we're good on that.
Okay.
But then during the construction phase, I really helped it really, really nice. So that was my, that was my kind of.
I was thinking that they, they weren't going to let you use that road.
Yeah. And I understand, yeah, and I paid for that, and I understand Fountain County's deal, you know, I mean, I mean, it's, you can go right from Fountain County to Park County, and that's where the farm sits, so you all get all the property tax, and I'm tearing up their rents. I get, I get that, so. Yeah, so we made that right, and I talked to the road commissioner over there, and, or road supervisor, I don't know the exact title, he says go for it, we're good.
They're good.
So we're good there in Fountain County. So, so we're going to go south, six tenths a mile, and then we'll go into Fountain County, then, and then if we still need to move anymore, and this is where I get a little fuzzy on my, on my roads, but we would go north out of the farm, two thirty-four, back to the east, and then take Tangier Road, back to the south. Okay? To, and then I think when it gets to Fountain County, I mean, to Park County, it turns to three seventy-five.
I don't recall three seventy-five, but that is.
Is that correct, Randy?
Yeah.
Randy says it's correct.
My, my old, I didn't just pass away, we're going back, caroling, forty-five.
Okay.
Yeah. And then you can go down to twelve hundred, and then take a left, and that goes to R.L. Corey Farm. And so, but that's, I don't know if we'll need to use that or not, that's kind of a backup, so.
Randy, you okay with the plan?
Yeah, I thought it was all right.
Okay.
We're going to do it fairly quick.
How about support and structure for the roads? Are roads going to be able to handle the weight?
I think so, really.
Do you have any proposal for that? If it was causing damage to the road, what were your thoughts on that?
I don't know, I guess, you know, I'd have to check with my, you know, the headquarters or my bosses and see what their thought on that is.
I don't expect you to build roads for us, but you know how that is.
I don't either, but I would like to.
Patch or grade or whatever.
I would like to put an F on it. If you get out there and it's real wet, you totally tear them up, I would think you would.
But that's a problem, I mean, that's, but it is act-based, so you may be exempt from that too, like farmers. I mean, if we have a weight limit on the roads, that manure is probably going to have to get out of there.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
So I suspect you have an exemption for a mistake on the act exemption, like farmers do to get their crops out?
Yeah.
So, so that damage is going to occur while it's getting, and we'll be able to avoid that, so.
Right, yeah. But we want to be good neighbors, you know, that's why I'm here, you know, so. And I know three seventy-five, it's, I mean, it's been patch and patch and patch, it looks like, so.
Yep.
And then twelve hundred to gravel road, so, but if we do extensive damage, we'll compensate.
Okay, well, that's, that's all I need.
I just want to be fair.
That's fair enough, too. We're thrilled you're there, we hope you, hope you're doing great there and stays a long time, and do you see any local jobs being created out of that?
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what we did, you know, we got five thousand sales there, and we're producing about a hundred and fifty thousand picks. I mean, production's just phenomenal, I mean, it's going really, really well. But to start that out, you got, it's really hard to hire twenty people without experience, so we bought in HM Diesel workers out of Mexico, and these guys would be, well, in Mexico, they would be considered a Mexican veterinarian, you know?
Okay.
But here, the equivalent to an animal science degree.
Yeah.
So pretty, pretty good guys, but, so what we've been doing is we use those guys to start, and of course, they're, you know, they don't want to live here, they don't want to go back to Mexico, so as those guys' terms are expiring, we're trying to replace them with local people, so we've hired several local folks, and we'll continue to do that, so.
How about feed possibilities from local farmers? Do you buy feed locally at all?
Our feed comes from, changed name, it's over in Wayntown, Indiana. It used to be Fritz Holzcraft's Mill, and then became Synergy, I think, so, yeah, so.
Well, that helps out.
So if they sell their grain to that mill, then we're buying local feed, so, yeah.
Good. So Fountain County benefit, farmers benefit from that, that'd be good, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, no.
Randy, anything we need to cover, or anything we need to specify before we wish them well?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Well, I sure appreciate it.
We're looking forward to it.
Merry Christmas to you all.
Looking forward to it. Do you need something from us, you let us know?
Yeah, and vice versa, I mean, it's kind of, it's kind of, you know, I'm from Walbach County, and, and then our, our mill and stuff's in Carroll County, that's kind of where our Indiana headquarters are, and then our company's based out of Newton Grove, you know, so, so we kind of got this one farm down here by, so, you know, we want to be part of the community, so there's a community need, you need hogs, and you got hog roost or whatever, I mean, just let us know, so, yeah, so. Unfortunately, I'm not down here that much, so I'm really not connected with the community, so.
How many acres there that you're using to your production?
Oh, thirty-five acres maybe, that the barn sits on and surrounding area, so, yeah.
I was at the, last year, year before, when you first bought concrete, I think, the first time, I was amazed how big it was then, but I'm sure it's bigger than that now.
Oh, yeah, it's, yeah, so.
Well, good.
It's turned out really, really nice, and Park County RNC's been great to work with.
Great, good.
It's good.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Recorder office contract, Mary Alice, Mary Alice not here. The Park County Recorder's Office has contracted with the system, Inc., for approximately ten years. We've been very satisfied with the guidance and security they provided. It's now time to contract with them for the upcoming year, twenty-twenty-one, we're asking for your continued support. Thank you for consideration. I don't have any real numbers, do we know if it's the same number, doesn't, I guess it doesn't matter, it's from her budget anyway, so.
That's computer systems?
Yeah, yeah.
It's, so the only things I've pointed out on it is that there's a lot of limiting language on if the system should crash, they're not held liable, and things of that nature, but that's not overly concerning because there's language in here indicates if you're unhappy for any reason, you can give them thirty-day notice and cancel, so.
Okay.
So I don't find that to be alarming based on the cancellation clause.
Okay.
Especially since we've already been using them.
Okay, is there a motion to approve? Is it the same contract that has been in the past?
You know, I'm not certain. We've looked at quite a few of these, so.
Yeah. You don't have them all memorized?
Seven hundred and three per year is what it said, so, on the pricing.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we approve the contract to the Recorder's Office with CSI. I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Go ahead.
There is a contract if you want to look over. Now, I just need sign it, did we, well, do you sign it or just me?
Oh, I just.
Okay. Then we have the schedule, the claim schedule, when they're due and when they're paid, or anything we need to see on this? Anything?
They're very similar as last year.
Okay.
And then on the backside of your schedules.
Make your meaning, yeah. Okay. You made a question on the claims? Not with any motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, we approve the claim schedule for twenty-twenty-one. I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Go ahead.
Then we have commission meeting schedule, same as always, first and third, we have two Tuesdays.
Yep.
One for Martin Luther King Day, it looks like, and one for Labor Day.
Yep. I'll make a motion, we approve the meeting schedule for the commissioners. And I will second that, that was on the back page. Yeah, on the back side.
I guess there's one other Tuesday up there that's not marked, it's July fourth, it's July sixth, so.
Yes, it's not highlighted, yeah.
Okay, we'll move a second to approve the commission meeting dates presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And the resolution, so CARES Act.
That was option two, you guys had elected last time.
Gotcha.
It's just the formalization of it.
All right.
And that will be ordered summer twenty-twenty dash twenty-six.
All right, so this is a resolution, so we don't have to have same-day say meeting for that, do we?
No, we went through that last week.
Yeah, it's just a resolution, so.
All resolutions are same-day same-meaning because they're lesser.
Yeah. All right, I'd make a motion, then we approve Resolution twenty-twenty dash twenty-six, provide reimbursement for public health and public safety federal costs with CARES Act funding.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Okay. And then LED lighting proposal? Yes, sir.
Yes.
Didn't recognize you with your mask on there.
I know. How are you guys doing?
We're doing good.
Paul's guys, except my condolences for Randy, I'm not sure who that is, but always not good to hear.
Yeah, Larry Beeman, yeah, he was a reporter, local newspaper.
Oh, okay, gotcha. I didn't know he was a member of the commission or whatever, so. Have you, so the last, the last time we met, the next step was to go to the council with the proposal. I did follow up with Laura, and we have, you know, end-of-year inventory that we're doing like specials with, we, proposals that we currently have out there, so I told Laura So I told Laura that, um, I've already approved a five percent discount, which equates to $2,000 for the county off that proposal, which will help with your return on investment as well. So really, obviously, a great time to do it with all the work that we do. Since we're the manufacturer and we install it as well, we obviously give a five per, or a five year labor and parts warranty on that. So meaning if a bulb goes out, India, or, uh, uh, energy harness is coming to replace that. So not only are you getting the lights, but you're almost getting a service contract along with it. There's no other manufacturer that is really offering that in the industry. So, um, yeah, that's what led me to coming back today to see if you guys have heard back from the council. If this taken.
I have, and at this time that they don't have any interest in doing anything until they see how the revenue is going to be coming in. Because it's going to be scary the next couple of years with income tax. So, so much of this stuff is from income tax.
Uh huh.
And so they are pretty unsure of where they're going to be. So, uh, I don't think they are willing to move forward with it at this time. We talked about that on the phone a bit before, that that was going to be a concern and. Have you heard anything, Bruce? Did that?
I mean, I read the one email and I could get from that one email that the council just doesn't have any interest at this point in time to come up with this kind of money.
And I can understand it.
I think at the meeting a few weeks ago, or maybe a month ago, or whatever, I told you, we entered into the, I mean, contract at the jail, but it was an energy savings contract. We didn't have to pay anything. We got all the lights upgraded. They got LED lights out there. Justin, I think, is very happy with the jail. We didn't pay a penny.
Okay.
But we're getting energy savings contracts. Whatever energy savings we get, the company gets part of it. And of course, then we're saving money as well through, through that.
Okay, I see.
And you came in with this proposal to say, hey, we'll do the same thing for the courthouse, but yet you pay us $40,000 to do it. I knew right off the bat that was going to be an issue.
Sure, sure. Yeah, so now that I understand that that's completely, yeah, we do things.
I mean, we didn't pay, we didn't pay a penny out there for Justin.
Right.
Yeah.
They came in, they redid all the lights, they changed all the fixtures, they put all the LED in. We didn't pay a dime.
Oh, okay.
Whatever savings we're getting every month.
Share that with them.
They get so much, and of course, we're getting a reduction in our, in the bill. So it's to their benefit because they're getting some of that energy savings. We're getting a benefit because we're not paying as much and Justin's got nice life out there to jail.
Yeah.
The courthouse, this is a whole different ballgame.
Yeah.
And.
It's just us purchasing new light.
Yeah, I knew, I knew this was going to be a problem.
Sure.
With, with the, the tax dollars. I mean, I just got an email right before we came in from the state of Indiana, our county audit, or the county association. They're monitoring the tax and unemployment claims. Of course, Indiana's hurting in both of those areas. Unemployment claims are sky high. Taxes are low because people aren't.
Aren't working.
Aren't working. So there's no, there's no state tax being withheld. Our revenues for the next two years are going to look really bad. And the council understands that. And there is no way they're, they're going to come in to forty thousand when we, we're going to lose a tremendous amount of revenue over the next couple of years, so.
It's the out of pocket investment is what it comes down to.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does. It don't happen. The timing of it is, is horrible because of the middle of the pandemic and the loss of revenue.
Because really, I mean, it makes sense the other way. I mean, if you had the forty thousand to spend, then then you get to keep all the savings instead of giving eighty-five percent of the savings to the company. So if you could see that, but it's just a matter of outlaying out of the forty thousand.
Well, what we, what we do with other companies too is if you, you're not putting, it's not a capital expenditure upfront, you do an operating lease. So you basically spread the payments across thirty-six months and at the end of the three years, you buy all of it for a dollar.
I don't see them making any, any moves along that until we get some stability in what's going to happen with the revenues coming in. But I appreciate you looking at it. When we first talked about, you guys were, you wanted to go do that and see what there was and, and, and you did, and I appreciate that. I mean, that's a, it's a lot of, a lot of effort there, but.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
As Bruce said, the timing is just not good for us now, so.
Okay.
Maybe that way, maybe that way everywhere. I don't know. We'll see how that goes. It'll be tough for you everywhere for a while.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I do appreciate.
Well, you know, we're always here for you guys if, you know, if you, you want to redress it or revisit it next year, um, just reach out to us.
Appreciate that. All right. And thank you very much.
Yeah, we just got done doing the high school not too long ago. So we've got local references too on the work that we do and stuff, so.
Appreciate that.
We're always here to help, so, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Enjoy your holiday.
You too.
Okay, travelers' claims. Now, Nick, I, I don't know what parts of that we can share on the settlement, but one of them said we can't disclose that.
I, I probably just want to go into a whole lot of any of them, because most, most of those, well, at least the federal government ones probably going to be litigated or at least, you know, mediated or whatever.
Okay.
And, uh, actually, both of those I probably wouldn't make comment on. Just acknowledge that there's been claim made and.
Okay. What we're, what we're talking about is a couple of those that we've had to settle and we're not allowed by the court to discuss the, the details of that settlement. We all had to approve, of course, the settlement, so we're aware of what those things were, but we couldn't share those numbers. And I guess that's pretty typical without those things work. I don't, never get involved with those.
I was more start talking about the newer claims that are in that part. The, when the claims received, is that what you're looking at?
That's what I've got, yes.
Right, so that's just the acknowledgement of claims received.
Okay.
Anything about litigation, we don't want to talk about publicly, though, because it.
I understand, yeah.
Could be used against us.
I understand. All right, thanks. Uh, Randy, we have a letter here. Uh, I can share everything when you come up, but it's just a request for a chip seal of, uh, two seventy-five south between Catlin Road and Fisher Road.
Is that what you're here for?
No.
Okay.
All right. So we'll come, we'll come back to that with Randy. Uh, plan commission report there is, just see, that's pretty good, two million dollars. And then we have payroll transfers. Is this just for our information? There's nothing we need to do with this?
Yeah, this is what I'm going to present to the council on Thursday.
Okay.
Um, at the beginning of the year, the encumbering wasn't done correctly. That was my fault. And we've also did a change in the payroll. The payroll is never, is not going to be on a split payroll anymore. And then, and all, all the years in the past, it's always been a split payroll. So now the council decided there is not to be a split payroll. Your payroll for the employees. So your first payroll, January the fourth, that people get paid, will be the ending of the payroll for twenty twenty.
Gotcha.
And I've also included every, every one of the commissioners their sheets to show what you need to get your twenty twenty salary. Because the people need to be paid on the salary ordinance.
Yep.
If you go to each individual ones, I ran a report on each individual and they are short on not getting their full pay on that fourth. So I'm trying to do the transfers to make sure that they do receive their full pay on the fourth.
Okay.
So you encumbering for next year to accommodate that then?
Right, so then after whatever we pay out, January the fourth, that number will be encumbered for the, um, there at the end of January of twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Hey, that's why you're in order and we, and we're not. You, you have that figured out.
The way the payroll schedule set up now, when the employees work December the twentieth, that is when the pay raise starts. With the way, when the council went and changed everything in February, that's making that change out of everything.
Okay.
So you're no longer encumbering from the year prior to pay the January the fourth?
We are encumbering that January the fourth.
But you're incorporating your raises December twentieth then?
Where the raises go be, take place, December the twentieth. Then at the end, there's a sheet in here, then, then that end of, at the end of December, we have enough money to encumber, to pay out the end of the salary ordinance for January the fourth.
Okay, that's what I was hoping.
So then that, what we have left over at the end of December, we'll pay out that January fourth, twenty twenty salary ordinance. And that January the fourth pay is what we're going to be encumbering.
Okay.
Okay. All righty. Um, Julie is not here. Julie is quarantined. She's under quarantine. She has, has.
She was going to present her standard operating procedures for the MS place. Um, her and I talked about it though, so she should have them for the next meeting if she can be here.
Good. I know they are actively working and getting ready to set up for the vaccination clinics, uh, so we'll have that up and running by the time it's necessary. Chris O'Brien back there, Randy? Chris gone? Then I guess it's Justin. I'm not even talking to you. Waste it a hundred bucks. I didn't, wouldn't that bug you? So why am I even talking to you?
That's probably the first thing he's ever won, probably.
Is it really?
Yeah.
That's great. I mean, what a great thing for him. His brother. Does that tell you anything?
That probably mine, so it's really mine.
Yeah, it'll be yours then, yeah, yeah. Seventeen thousand dollar little vehicle there. That's great.
Yeah.
Tutor audited it.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't have much. Fifty-three in the jail currently. We started our precautions again for COVID, so kind of limiting on some of the minor crimes that we would normally arrest for.
Gotcha. So how do you do that with the minor? You just?
There's a few misdemeanors. It's a requirement that you do go to jail, same jail DUI domestic battery.
Okay.
But most of the others are.
They just get a court date? Is that what it is, or?
I'm sorry, what?
Do you give them a court date or they just?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we just, uh, give them a summons of the, basically traffic ticket with the court date.
They just don't need to go to jail. Here you go, our show of court.
Well, yeah, some of that stuff's not worth the risk.
Okay, yeah, I agree. I agree.
Um, we ended the year at two hundred and three thousand, two hundred and eighteen and fifty cents for the out of county and DOC housing.
How is that compared?
It's the lowest since I've been in office, but it's still higher than prior to that, except back when we're doing like half million dollar a year housing, sixty DOC inmates or whatever, but.
So why, why has the DOC number dropped off? Are they just not having as many in their population? Are they, they built, they had a jail that wasn't being used. Is that prison being used now that wasn't being used before?
I think that with the sentencing reforms and a lot of that stuff, they've gotten rid of a lot of population. But they've also reformulated how they pay us instead of just paying us per inmate every day that we do a report on. Now they're kind of doing like an overall, they're just basing it off like a general.
Ah.
We housed a hundred DOC inmates last year, then they figured that out and that's what they'll give us for next year. Just taking the, kind of with the regular number where that we've been housing.
Okay.
And I think that there's seven DOC inmates in there now.
Okay.
And that's maybe a little bit lower than normal, but like I said, the fee's already set that we've normally been running a little bit higher than that. So that's on average is, we're still around on average.
I'm sure there is. Is there a level of, of crime that they send to county jails versus keeping in?
Uh, anybody that's a level six, which is the lowest felony now, um, does not go to the prison.
Okay.
Stay in the county jail, but they're still a department correction inmate, still a state inmate versus a county.
Okay.
So that's when they reimburse us to house them.
Okay. So if they're higher than that, they would go to prison.
Prison, yeah. Or I think if it's over two years, if somebody's a level six and they get one, two, then they, they go into the prison and out of the jail. So it kind of limits the time that we have them.
Does what? You get paid, cover your costs?
Yeah, yeah.
So we're not making profit like we used to, but it's, but it's not costing us really anything.
Yeah, and it's mainly, our staffing levels have always stayed the same in the jail. I think it's only two years old now. So we've always had the same staff level.
Okay.
So yeah, any extra inmates were.
Helps compensate for that.
Yeah, but the food costs go up a little bit, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, and they've always had discussions. There's been discussion the last couple of years about raising their rates. The state prison, they cost this much to house an inmate and then they dump them on us.
Yeah.
Want to give us about half that.
Yes.
So I don't know. We, we hope that that'll increase.
Okay. You did long for the ride. You got nothing to say about it, so they are.
Yeah, yeah. We just have to do it, I guess.
Yes, we do.
Um, we served four thousand nine hundred and forty-seven meals. That was through November. So about five thousand meals, so that's three a day. Um.
Stack? Can you pull a stack?
Yeah, uh, well, I think we are short one or two jail officers.
Okay.
Full on everybody else. Uh, we had three or four staff so far. It's had COVID, but nobody's in quarantine now.
Okay.
Uh, none of the inmates have had it yet, so hopefully they don't.
Okay.
I'm hearing some of our neighbors are having a repot of it in their jails, so hopefully, yeah, hopefully we don't.
Now, am I correct on this? You know, COVID numbers on our county jail count toward our county number, but the ones in the prison do not. Is that correct?
I am not sure on that.
Okay.
I do not know. Uh, and I think the last thing I have, we did a, I got a council approval, but we had some excess money in our budget. We used part of that. We had two cars of rotoscues, a high mileage older cars, but one of them, uh, one of the guys been rear ended, they totaled it. And then we had another, a reserve officer crashed one into deer, totaled it. But they allowed us to spend $10,000 out of budget on a twenty fourteen Tahoe, four wheel drive, but it's pursuit rate, came off the lights, it was outfitted.
Okay.
Um, then we kicked in another five grand out of commissary. So we did just purchase it, got it in last Friday, so like that, but it, more likely, I think, we're just going to keep it as a reserve vehicle.
Okay. So those are the two vehicles I've signed a title for, okay.
Yeah, and I think that, yeah, I think one of them may give us fifty-seven hundred dollars or fifty-eight hundred dollars, and then the other one might get almost fifty-nine hundred dollars, so.
You think you need much?
Nope, I think we're good right now.
Your family all well? Everybody got, took care of and healed up?
Yes.
Did the little guy ever get it?
He never got tested, but I don't know how he could have got it, but he never, ever got sick, so.
Yeah.
Probably the only common news hadn't ran in, in his fifteen months of living. So I don't, I don't know how he wouldn't have got it, but.
Okay. Well, take care. Enjoy your vacation.
Okay.
Your holidays. I guess we'll see you sometime. See, I guess we'll see you before that, won't we? One more meeting before that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks for asking.
Randy? I hate that box. I really do. Nick, catch your knife.
Should have tipped me off, Randy.
Hey, Randy, before we get busy, I had a request to ask by, by, viable, my old person written that wrote. Says it's been a long time since anything's been done to Pipeline Road. Do you have any plans on Pipeline?
We're going to try to patch it up.
Okay, okay. Just talking, chip seal, I'm sure. Is there any plans to re-chip ceilings in the future?
Not for next year.
Okay, I'll, I'll let you know.
I tried to do it, but.
That's for Janey.
Okay.
No, the printout. Yeah, that just goes with him back to the office. It doesn't have anything to do with the bids.
Uh, you still gotta, um, formally sign the Bridgestone ordinance on the stop signs.
Oh, yes. I'm, that wasn't on the agenda. Let's do that where you're getting set up there. We already approved this, uh.
Wait just a second. Did you, uh, did you text in that correction?
No, I don't think I did. We, we made all the north, and somebody's already tried to tear one of them down already. As if there's a lot of them. The north and south roads are. You don't stop on them unless they come to a T, which is Bridgestone Road, Crooks, the one that comes around for the fire department head south out of town. They had two stop signs on the north section of, was it Hoosier?
Hoosier and Webster.
And we switched them so they stop east and west. So those two at Hoosier and Webster, instead of stopping north and south, they'll be stopping east and west.
Do you want to?
That makes all roads north and south. And that makes all roads north and south straight.
You identified which ones are wrong.
Do you want to mark it on the map? There's a map.
Yeah, I'll mark it. It'd be easier for me to mark it on the map here.
Cause I just adopted the map that Randy had provided.
Okay, it's actually, I can't, I can't tell here for sure. They were here.
I, I think that one's might be, I don't know. You might put it in red pen or something or whatever you can do.
Yeah, this map is already.
Hard to read. But basically that ordinance just adopts, uh, and allows Randy to place the stop signs at the locations and get it on that map, um, at those intersections.
So this, the ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-six?
Is that right, Laura?
Yeah, we just did twenty-five.
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, we did twenty-five.
No, we just did twenty-five a while ago. We did ordinance.
I thought you did in twenty-six.
We did twenty-five, then we did twenty-six.
Oh, we did ordinance?
And that should have been a resolution, not an ordinance.
Is this one a resolution?
Let's see, that's on the map again, Jim.
Oh, yeah.
But instead of levying our own fine, um, actually, if you want, I can just re-edit that and make it more clear.
But you?
I, I think I'll probably just edit it.
Okay, we'll just, we'll just leave this back?
No, I got it saved.
There you did. The request for chip seal on two seventy-five south between Catlin and Fisher, is that any planning for that?
No, we're not going chip and seal.
Hey, Dan, if you start changing, I don't want to change.
Okay, we're going to pay it. Okay, when's that going to happen?
Next year.
Next year, okay, I'll let them know.
Yep, our money holds. No, that is, that one.
Oh, I think I already did let them know that.
That one in Cardinal Road is the first two on the list.
Okay, good, good. Were you hauling stone on, on Cardinal Road?
You write in the changes, I'll edit it.
Okay, I saw the truck, so I think that's what that was.
I just marked them on the map. Uh, Webster Street will stop at Hoosier both directions. That's all.
Here's your map back to the reference you want.
Yeah, I, I may have turned that up a little bit.
Okay, what a process. Here we go.
Okay, so this is a bid offer from Garza Tires, um, to the Park County Highway Department. Tires and Tire Service is what the bid's on. So they have loader tire tires seventeen and a half by twenty-five, twelve ply for five ninety-three. Their Magna brand of tire, MB three hundreds. And then they have twenty-three and a half by twenty-five by sixteen ply at eleven twenty-five. And twenty-three and a half by twenty-five by twenty ply at eleven twenty-five.
Just so folks understand who are watching this and are here for this. Process we're going through now is we have a deadline and bids have to be in to supply the highway department with the materials the highway needs to operate. We are not approving any, any bids at this time. We are simply stating whether the bid as it was submitted, uh, prior to the deadline and that it's in proper order. And then once we've done that and accepted those, then they'll go back to the highway department. The highway department then will come back to us with a recommendation on which bids to accept, and then we will accept the ones, uh, at the next meeting then. Right now, we are just acknowledging to all involved that the bids were in place, they were on time, and they are written, written accurately.
Do you want a public reading of the dollar amounts then for your purposes?
Basically, we're just acknowledging that they all come in on time and.
Just need to acknowledge from you that that it's in proper order, that all the required documentation's there and then.
All right, so you have the notice, you have the, uh, information tires is evil for a bid.
So by listing all these and the minutes that we have received, then if someone was to turn in a bid today, we can show that we can't take that bid today because it's beyond the deadline and all these were accepted as of the deadline.
All right, so he has on here under the bid part where he's signed it, but he doesn't have a public having included anything on it.
We'd have to build the minutes that, uh, whatever that one was not accepted. And that's why we do it. Sometimes it's just a little thing, but it's gotta be, gotta be right.
Believe it or not, I don't remember how we do things from year to year occasionally.
Well, you know, you young kids can't remember stuff very well.
Wasn't on my phone, so.
You're young punks, can't do much of anything.
Maybe just wait till you get younger than us.
Yeah, no kidding. No kidding. Everybody's younger than me.
You think we're bad?
I'll just take, I'll take a nap over here, Nick. Don't be nervous. Old people, I take a nap.
I just don't want to get a picture of myself.
Oh, stop side is.
Hey, Jim, do you mind if I? This one's addressed to you.
Really? Yeah, go ahead. Probably check. That is two pounds. Is that a bracelet?
Just put up.
To Randy?
He's probably aware of it. He seemed to want us to order that.
You know, something that never sees filming.
I know. Right now, you can still tell, but as soon as that energy starts stretching out and spreading, it's dead. And I can see what the new sign posted there, the street signs is all completely entangled enough in it. What we need to do is just move the sign to the other side, just post the other side. Oh, no, I couldn't deal with it. Yeah, I could not deal with it. I'd go off, Justin, have you.
You know, your oil services, I didn't have everything, all the requirements to imagine yet. Comp Tire Service.
That was a rain cone. I've seen a big buck Saturday morning. Wasn't that nice, but even nice big buck.
S and G Excavating. This is S and N Pre-Test Incorporated. They don't have anything on the letterized form, so you don't really need it. Cut on aggregates. The other ones can start planning aggregates. They had everything. Wabash Valley Asphalt. Have the no resection done like that. St. Reesus Full Book Incorporated. That's another check off. EMH Bridge Engineering Incorporated. Bridge Materials Empire. White Silver Mill Service. Middle Corn Incorporated. US Aggregates Incorporated. Heritage Petroleum. Making up all the requirements also. Asphalt Materials Incorporated. VHK Auto Parts Incorporated may have metal requirements also. Scary Solutions. They have everything. Scary Solutions again. Yeah. E3 Bridge. Subotan and Fork Incorporated. Hanson Aggregates Midwest. Looks like most of them metal, big parts. So what?
That it?
Thanks, uh, will these be available for public viewing?
You're not lying on me?
I just, I just wanted to see the other petroleum bid, that's all, if, if it's possible. I appreciate that. Actually, I won't be, unfortunately, I'm, I'm up in Berman, Illinois, so if you got five minutes of your time that I could.
That or we can email it to you.
Well, if you got five minutes, I can, I sure would appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, all those have, all that stuff has to be public because you have no way to know what if you're showing me to operate.
Right, sure, sure. No, and I pre, I appreciate.
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate the opportunity to bid. Appreciate.
It's too bad for us that it doesn't go the other way, that you can change your bid now.
Well, no.
Too bad we can't do an auction that way. It doesn't work that way, you know?
You're right, but I, I respect the system and it is what it is, so. I'm just glad to have the opportunity to submit a bid for your county.
Well, we appreciate the interest. Thank you. Okay, well, Randy, what else you got?
I've got a ten bike check, uh, for bridge inspection. Now eighty-six hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-nine cents. You either just sign it in, get your approval, and then sign it.
You have any other checks, Randy, or?
Yeah, I forgot to, I'm gonna weigh that. We found a little boy trailer.
Good.
The one we was looking at was already gone, but found another one for plus five thousand dollars more. Found a thirty thousand dollar, but it's a two thousand eight eager beaver. And tri axle, left back axle. We should be able to haul dump trucks on it.
Good, good.
Ours is getting pretty good shape and chip spreader won't fit on it, like about two feet of the oil hooked up.
Good.
So this summer I had to drive the chipper all around the county. That's not good on the end, but not really like behind either.
Is that all the hand type? Just doing both? I'll make a motion. We approve, uh, the hand type checks that's submitted by highway department. The first one was to Major Brothers Farm. Thirty thousand dollars for the trailer. The other is to VS Engineering, uh, eight thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-nine cents for bridge inspection.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moving second to approve the hand type check that's presented by the highway department. All in favor, say aye. Oh, okay.
You have to sign.
Yep, I do.
I don't think you have to sign.
What else you got?
Cardinal Road, it's all ground up and we've got two layers of stone on it. Started about noon today on the third layer and hopefully we'll have it finished tomorrow. And. We get that finished, we're gonna back to passing, we need the pass two seventy-five, Bishop Road. So they got a pretty good list then.
One I was just on that I was gonna tell you about, can't remember now, that was. Marshall Road, I think, um, north of Marshall.
Supposed to get them a haul together.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
And, uh, grants are all in, grant request for me crossing is all in. Grant request for many crossings are all entered, and I'm just waiting to hear how next year is gonna go. Cindy and Randy worked together to get those in, so...
I think that's supposed to be this month, so...
We decided it's gonna be our Christmas present, right?
There you go. Work committee.
If you would have your sign guy to move the post on the north end to Hoosier, to the east side of the road, and still the west side of the road.
One behind the tree?
He put a stop sign on the sign post, it's already there. I can show you a picture of it, you can see part of the S and part of the P, the sign's exactly behind the tree, and it's on the left side of the road. It needs moved anyway, because the street signs is already grown completely, Evergreen's already grown completely around it, it was in the middle of it, so just tell him to move the whole post over, and you'll be able to see the signs and everything. I didn't know if you've been that way yet. That was one I'd be stuck on, I took a picture of it. Tell him to move it to the east side of the road.
Lord, will you pick that check up to the trailer tomorrow about nine o'clock?
So what, check up?
Pick up that check.
For the major.
Not a lot of major.
Yes, that'll be ready, pick up tomorrow morning.
Perfect. All right, thanks, Randy, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I was a little late finding out about it, but they sold the one down at Forsyth Brothers. They had a ten-foot detachable down there, ten foot wide, heavy duty, three axle, but the time I heard about it, I was gonna call you, I heard about it.
Forsyth and Flack Brothers.
Forsyth.
Flack Brothers had one too.
Yeah, Forsyth.
Is this Stewart and Derek Major buying this model, is that who it is?
No, it wouldn't be Stewart and Derek, it'd have to be Stewart and Drew.
Okay.
You got two different outfits there.
Met with Stewart over the weekend, trying to get some... Work done on the community ditch there that is on Jim Boozelbach property, they're trying to get that worked out, get more drainage in there. Hopefully they got that worked out yesterday, let's see how it goes. Anything else? That it? Cindy, did you have anything for us?
Yes, I do.
Okay. I'm sorry, I could've got you on earlier.
That's okay. One thing to create awareness with the redevelopment commission, so as you know, after we do the tax certificate sale through the commissioners in the fall, anything that doesn't sell, we try to occasionally go out and get bids to get those properties back on the active tax rolls, so we've had some interest in some of the parcels that didn't sell that have come through, so the redevelopment commission is okay to go ahead and do that. Additionally, the Leontright property was already in the redevelopment commission's name, so that's gonna be on the list as well. We've had a couple of inquiries. Those people are aware that it's available for bid, and those are sealed, or the redevelopment commission does a sealed bid process, so there's not a public open auction bid. Bids will be due the end of January, or will be opened in their January meeting, January twenty-sixth.
When's the date on them happen to be in?
January twenty-sixth at six PM is when they'll be opened, so they need to be in prior to that.
Prior to that. I did have another phone call today on that. Do you have actual copies of the state's report on that, that you can give people?
It's not done yet. So we've made a note that that one is pending, the Indiana Brownfields completion project.
That's what the question was, do you think that will...
I think it'll be done before...
I think that's a lot of concern for people until... I mean, I believe there at one time was, there was even a sewage treatment plant out there.
Yeah, but that's not on this property.
Okay, it's not on that particular piece.
No, the only thing that we had to address on that seven acres was the asbestos.
Yeah.
And they're doing the groundwater monitoring.
Okay.
The sewage plant, the coal fire plant, and the water tower, all the other person's property. Yes.
And was there any issues with that at the time? That originally sold the tax sale too.
Correct. And he bought it, you know, as is, so that was his choice. The expectation from Indiana Brownfields is late winter, early spring, when they will have their sign off done. So as soon as we get that, then I think we'd all feel comfortable processing.
Yeah, it's pretty exciting, it's been a long time coming.
Yes.
So there it is. Anyway, just wanted to create awareness that that's on that list, and if people are interested, we have the list of available properties at our office for pickup, and we do that so that we can provide a little explanation about how it works.
Okay.
So again, I want you to be aware of that. The second thing is, I forwarded to you an email just again late this afternoon, so I apologize, but we just got an announcement from OKRA that they're doing a third round of COVID-nineteen response grants. Again, this one is, you can request up to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. The grant can be used, or I should say, the eligible activities for that would be mental health services, childcare services, public Wi-Fi locations, food pantry or bank services, subsidized payment programs, or again, what we did last time, the grants are loans to businesses to retain low to moderate income jobs. So my question to you is, would you have an interest with the county, again, applying for that, if I can find a program or a couple of programs that would work well for that grant request?
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, I started kind of putting the feelers out of thoughts and what people are hearing, asking both of our school superintendents, automatically the public Wi-Fi spots was high on their list. Trying to figure out the exact details on how to make them perhaps mobile. I'm concerned about just putting a place and then parents are expected to drive there, or you know, the guardians to drive there instead of your car, especially in the winter months.
You might want to inventory those, because we are getting, actually, we have several available right now, there's three right here.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I don't know that that works well just to put it in a place, that it needs to be more mobile, or in an area that would allow public to come in and use it out of the weather. So I'm challenging the superintendents to come up with some thoughts about how they feel that that might work, before we say that that's our idea. And then I've asked some other folks in the community too, that I thought might be getting these types of requests. I've also contacted Community Action, because I know they have very similar subsidized payment plans if you're at two-hundred or two-hundred-and-fifty percent of poverty level. So those are the extreme low income, they have programs to help with that. So if we don't figure out an idea for the Wi-Fi, or maybe this is the second idea, is if we go, those that are not at two-hundred, maybe it's at one-hundred percent poverty level with some of these things.
Just some thoughts, I know Bloomingdale has a community center.
Yeah.
Roseville has a community center, might be, that'd be inside.
Well, so most of the towns have that, I just don't know what kind of supervision would be needed.
Yeah.
That was my own thought, because I don't want to give them the whole, well, you have to be this age, and somebody's gotta monitor it, or you gotta have parents there,
and...
But anyway, we'll work through that. The proposals on this are due January twenty-ninth, so we'll have to figure it out pretty quickly. But I just want to make sure we have your blessing to move forward.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful.
We will have at least one spot, maybe two, for the Convention and Visitors Commission open that we will need to fill coming up here this next year. West Central Indian Economic Development District is changing its name, we're rebranding to Thrive, so there'll be some press reports coming out on that. Ryan Keller did a great job with that of making the changes that are necessary to be more of a proactive benefit to us, which we have not taken advantage of that very well over the years, our folks have taken very good advantage of that, so we're trying to make those changes. And anybody else have anything for the good cause? John, appreciate what you're doing back there all the time, appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
I don't know that we're ready to go back to having closed meetings, but I know with live streaming, we have the possibility, the state has given us permission to do that, we make the decision to do that. Are you, would you still be interested, willing to come and livestream those meetings in?
Close, okay.
Hope we don't get to that point, but we may have to.
Right.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion with adjourn. Second.
More to adjourn. Thanks, folks.